Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 5th, 2018. First order of business is an invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And as we begin tonight, I just want to remind everybody to please use the microphones, both for the benefit of the audience and for those watching on TV. And I think we're making a concerted effort to try to do that. So if you'll all please rise. Tonight, as we meet, as we roll from the fall season into what appears to be the beginning of the winter season, we are ever mindful of the many challenges which face the city of Batavia as we go about doing the work that we need to do to protect the community and serve the community in so many vital fashions. Obviously, we look forward to the days when we're going to be plowing snow and cleaning off ice and making the roads safe. And we also want to hope that a special blessing is showered on Batavia as winters come and that we do not experience bad accidents or bad situations because of severe weather. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those in the foreign service of our United States of America, and we just ask that all those serving us in the military are showered with a special blessing as they go about their vital mission. As always, we want to ask for guidance and direction and understanding for the members of the city council as they act on the various items of business before us, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of them, we are here to do the very best we can for the betterment of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Brown, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the facts of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected members of the city council are present in the council for this evening's meetings. We have the necessary quorum, obviously, to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Atack?
I do not have anything this evening.
One thing I would like to add, and I'll throw it under the matters from the public, we do have in the audience Mr. Roy Bailey, who was again this year with his wife, running the annual toy distribution program for needy families in Batavia. Roy wasn't sure he was going to be able to be at the meeting tonight, so we didn't put him on the agenda, but I told him if he came, we would put him. And he's here. He changed the schedule so that he could be here, because he wants, as you may know, we started the actual movement of the toys yesterday and have now got them in the distribution point, thanks to the great efforts of the Batavia Fire Department, who showed up en masse and took a big task and made easy work out of it. And so he'll be here to talk for us for a couple of minutes about the toy drive. So I'm going to put him on as item six A then, if nothing else.
Well, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Move, Alderman Atack, second, Alderman Stark, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's none, absent. Moving then to item number five, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place some file planned commission minutes for October 3rd, 2018. Tree commission minutes for April 4th, 2018. Committee of the whole minutes for October 2nd and October 9th, 2018. July and August 2018, city council financial reports. Approvals: October 19th, 2018 payroll in the amount of $839,833.54. And November 2nd, 2018 payroll in the amount of $899,818.60. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,687,206.68. City council minutes for October 15th, 2018. Resolution 18-117-R approving the preliminary final plat of subdivision for MIF Batavia subdivision at 1100 North Redant. Resolution 18-119-R authorization to bind insurance for GL property and workers' compensation. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Move, Alderman Atack, second, Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's none, absent. Okay, then, let's move to item number six. Matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wants to address city council on something not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come forward and use the mic and tell us your name, please.
My name is Gail Bridger. I was invited to tell you very briefly about a fundraiser that Suicide Prevention Services is hosting. But first, I'd like to say that 21 years ago, the Batavia Police and Ambulance Squad helped save a member of my family. She had made a very, very serious suicide attempt. And this led me to decide to volunteer for Suicide Prevention Services in Batavia, which I have been doing for the past 18 years. SPS, as I'll refer to it from here on, is dedicated to the mission of reducing and eliminating suicide and suicide attempts. The agency provides prevention, intervention, and post-intervention services. It houses the National Suicide Hotline and is one of only seven agencies nationally that is implemented and delivers all of the components of addressing the issues of suicide. We are a 501(c)(3) agency, and 85% of funds received go directly into programming. I say "we" because after 18 years of volunteering, I feel like I'm one of the family. SPS relies on community support to continue providing these valuable services. On November 18th, 2018, SPS will host its annual Harvest of Hope brunch. This will be a celebration of 20 years of service to the Fox Valley. There will be a great brunch, as well as lots of baskets to bid on, a wine pool. I have provided you with a flyer about the event, and you can register online up until a few days before the event. If you are unable to attend, of course, a donation of any size is appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts. Anybody else? Mr. Bailey, you're on.
Where's your head? Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Good evening, Batavia. Got good news and bad news. Well, and I only have four minutes and 18 seconds, because I know Mrs. Claus is watching this on TV, and she's going to know where I'm at and where I need to be at. Started about a month ago when I came home, and she goes, "Where's the toy drive going to be this year?" I says, "Well, I'm working on it." Next week goes by, and I arrive at home again, because I've been flying quite a bit this year. And she says, "Well, where's the toy drive going to be?" I says, "I'm working on it. I'll let you know pretty soon." Well, last week, she told me, she says, Alderman Brown, she kind of looked at me like this. She goes, "Do you not understand what I'm asking you?" I says, "Did anybody look at you like that?" Thank you. She says, "I'm going to go to the mayor, and I'm going to talk to Laura, because it seems like you can't get this facility done." So she went to Laura, and she went to the mayor, and you know what? Batavia, we're going to have a toy drive here. The toy drive is going to be December 9th, she told me. I says, "Okay." She says, "It's a good thing we got that spot." She says, "I hope your sled was big enough to drive it from Batavia to the North Pole." So thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Laura, and thanks, Mrs. Claus, for making that happen, that we have this facility. Facility this year is going to be at 143 First Street. 143 First Street, here in Batavia. Thanks to the chief, and I'm not going to call him fireman, but elves showed up yesterday for about five hours, chief, to make this facility suitable and a welcome for the community to have the toy drive. The toy drive again is going to be December 9th. And I asked my wife, I go, "How many people you think were going to get signed up for this?" She says, "I've already started to sign up." I go, "Oh, yeah, I knew that." She says, "They're signing up already, and by the numbers that's already signed up, we could hit over 600 children here in Batavia." They're setting up tonight. They will be setting up until December 8th to make that facility ready for the community. I'm asking the community to use some of the areas for drop-offs, that being the two fire departments here in town for new toys or slightly-used. Funway is another spot. Batavia Library and Carl's Auto over on Route 25. Those are just a few drop-offs right now that we can use to drop off toys. Any checks or gift cards, they need to come here to the police department. Checks need to be made out to Batavia Access Toys, and any of the gift cards also should be dropped off here at the police department. We're only asking that toys be dropped off at these facilities at this point in time. Again, we're looking at probably 600 children here in Batavia to take care of. I ran out last, tonight, and I asked her, looking at the count, "What does it look like? What denomination does it look like? What genders does it look like that we're kind of really behind in?" And it's like always, it's the teens. The teens are the hardest for us to put together for Christmas. So if you're thinking about, you know, dropping off a toy, you know, please drop it off. I mean, I don't know how many infants they're going to have, three to five boys, three to five girls, six to 10 boys, six to 10 girls, and then our teens. This facility is outstanding. I can't thank the mayor, the council, and especially our partners here in town, BEI, for making this another facility that we're able to use here for Batavia. So I'm asking Batavia to get me off the hook with Mrs. Claus. Help me get this program underway. Help me make this another successful program here in Batavia. I'm running in and out of Batavia probably too much during this time of the year, and I'd like to see her smiling face instead of that frown on her face with her glasses down like this, asking me, "How you going to get this done?" Batavia, I need your help. Let's make this another program for Batavia families, Batavia children, and our community. Any questions? I'm down to one minute and 20 seconds.
Your Honor?
As every year, probably, for the last 18 years, I guess, it was probably 18 or 19 years ago when your mother was in here, and blessing us with her presence and telling us all about the program and what she does and how it all happens. She touched a spot in my heart that I guess I'll never forget. And since then, I've put the council and staff up to the challenge that on a certain evening of a city council meeting, we should all bring in whatever we can for gifts, and we'll put them on a table that Laura hopefully will have set up a couple of tables for us, and we'll have gifts that we can all bring in and help you out with what you're trying to do, Roy. I certainly admire you for what you're trying to do. And as Roy mentioned, the teens are the very hard ones to help out. So a lot of us, we don't like to go shopping very much, but it's real easy to pick up a gift card. And I can tell you, Roy and Mrs. Claus and the Doobies and everybody else that help out, they're the most honest people you're going to find that will ever run any type of a charitable organization. So you can certainly be rest assured that any check that gets written out to Access Toy Drive-
Yeah, not to me.
Yep. Or any gift card is going to get used for this cause. They're not going to be out going to dinner with it or buying donuts for anybody or anything like that. It's going to be used for this cause. And what they really like about the gift cards, from what I understand, is they look, as they're setting all this stuff up, and they look at where they're short on certain types of gifts for certain age groups. And that's when they run out to a local store in the city of Batavia, and they purchase these types of gifts that they realize they're short on. So gift cards are real easy. They're not impressive. When we pile everything up on a table, they're not impressive, but they're real easy to get, and it helps them probably more than a gift that you can-
A gift or gift cards or checks or whatever. I mean, Mrs. Claus and those other helpers out there, that they just know how to get it done. I mean, they tell me to, you know, go wake the city up, so I'm waking the city up.
Is there a certain night, Roy? I mean, you're having this on December 3rd, right?
9th.
The summer 9th. So is December 3rd too late for the gifts? Would you need them?
Absolutely not. You know, we've been in a situation where the night before, we were kind of scrambling, you know?
When would you like the city council to bring theirs in? The last meeting of November, which would be November 19th, or December 3rd?
December 3rd.
December 3rd. Okay. So I put us all up to that challenge to do what we can, and we'll have a table set up here, and let's, you know, try to help out as much as we can. And I'll remind Laura to remind staff. I'll send an email off to her probably a few days ahead of time and say, "Could you remind everybody to do what they can?" And we'll go from there.
And invite to the council and everybody on December 9th to, you know, come down and be with us as we're giving out the toys. I mean, it's quite a day. I mean, seeing your neighbors, your brother and sister, somebody that you knew across town that you supported along with this. It's really something to, you know, that all of us as Batavians can look at us and say, "We did something for Batavia. We did something for a neighbor. We did something for somebody that couldn't do for themselves this year." Got to go.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Dan just asked a good question. The money, if there's a check, we, if it's a check from us, we could bring it here on that evening.
Absolutely.
If it's the public, they can drop it off at the window of the police station.
Right. Good. Thanks, everybody. Have a Merry Christmas. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
I just want to add a couple of things on to what Roy has just said. I think from a history perspective, this may be the 70th continuous year of this toy drive in Batavia.
It is.
Yeah, I think it started in 1948. Bud Richter became the fire chief in '47, and this was kind of a pet project of his, his second year as the Batavia Fire Chief. And as you may remember, it was, we didn't have new toys that we were buying. You brought your broken toys, your broken dolls, your undressed doll, your whatever it was, the bicycle, down to the fire station, and then the firemen repaired the broken stuff. And then on the 23rd or 24th, members of the Batavia Rotary Club took them around and put them on front doorsteps of houses that people, they thought people may need some toys in their house for Christmas time. And this is how it started. And so I think there's been several different folks who have carried this on, but certainly Roy's mother became the big voice of this for a number of powerful years, and she literally grew the program to its dimensions that it is now. And with her passing and the passing of Roy's father, who was kind of the Mrs. Claus of that moment, because that poor guy, he really did a lot of hauling over the years. But anyway, Roy and his wife, Jeannie, picked up and ran with it, and they've really kept it going. And as Roy just reported to you, he was contacting Laura and myself with great regularity the last few weeks about needing to, because we had all the toys that we had collected over the past year.
I don't know where was that?
Why?
Secret hideous.
Oh, okay. Anyway, we had to go over to the east side and get the toys. And when we were looking around, and most of this credit goes to Laura, we tried to, this was not an easy place this year to find someplace to do this. And I just want to publicly acknowledge that we ended up going into the old American Cancer Society office at 143 First Street, which is owned by Batavia Enterprises. And so they have made the generous offer to allow us to use their facility, and it looks like it's going to work out pretty good, because there's a bunch of separate little rooms, and they can divide up the various age groups and whatever is in that building. It's a pretty good-sized building. But in addition, before we settled on that one, or before Roy and his wife settled on that one, we had two other offers for locations. One was from John Clark and his family out at the old Avenue Motors property. And there were some issues there as far as how the layout of the building went, but John certainly stepped forward and said he would allow for this to happen in that building if we wanted to do it. And the other one that we brought into the discussion just last week was Phil Shaws, who was the owner of the Ace Hardware Store in Batavia. And he has a vacancy out there right next to the Ace Hardware Store on Randall Road, at least temporarily. He had a business move out. It's a smaller space, though, and it really was kind of too small for what we needed. But Phil talked to me as late as last Friday and said he would donate the space. He'd be honored to have it there. So I just wanted to acknowledge three big hearts in this town that really stepped forward and kept this going. And so on our 70th anniversary, all those who started it, and most of, almost everybody that was involved is no longer with us, but of all the things that we do in this town and carry on a great tradition, this is one of the better ones, because nobody getting any big fanfare in this. This is all quiet, good-natured, hard, back-breaking work to do this. And we got the hearts and souls and spirit here that really carries Batavia forward and really does something very special. And I would suggest, if you look around, we may be one of the few towns around here that does this. There's a lot of other neighboring communities that don't do anything like this. And so the Batavia Access Committee, I take my hat off to them, and Roy and Jeannie and all those working with them, because they really do make Batavia a very special place to live. And as you know, we have to control this thing somewhat, because if we just opened the door and said, "We got free toys," we'd have a crowd like you wouldn't believe. So we have, we do this by invitation. They get a letter from us if we qualify them, and you have to be a Batavia area resident to be able to come to this. So it'd be nice to take care of everybody, but we have to pass them on to the Salvation Army or some of the other good-hearted folks in the region to help out with people not in Batavia. But this is truly a moment when Batavia steps up and takes care of its own, and there are some very solid citizens in this town who annually make some significant donations to this and absolutely are firm in the fact that they don't want any credit. They don't want anybody to know that they're doing it, and they just want it as part of their own little thing for Christmas. So I think that identifies yet another good quality that we have in this town that makes Batavia a very special place. So, Roy, thank you. Merry Christmas. All right. Nobody else? We'll go then to the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're honored to have Holly Deckman, the Executive Director, here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to start by thanking or congratulating Laura Newman, our City Administrator, on her Women of Distinction Award that was, she was honored with last week, and many of you came to support her. That was very nice of you, for the Women in Business, I'm sorry, the Daily Herald Business Ledger. And so congratulations again, Laura, on your award. Next, I also, in preparation for our Inspire Awards, on January 24th, we are looking for nominations for Citizen of the Year. So if anyone out there thinks that there are individuals within our community that should be acknowledged and awarded for their commitment to a lifelong service to our community, then we would love to hear from you, and you can just send me an email at the Batavia Chamber. My email address is holly@bataviacamber.org, or you can call our offices at 630-879-7134 with your nominations. We can just, it's not a long, formal nomination process. Just submit a name, along with a little bit of background and history of why you think that they should be honored. And then past Citizens of the Year all get together and make a selection. So the deadline for nominations for Citizen of the Year is Friday, November 16th. So send me an email, send a letter to our office at 106 West Wilson Street, or call me at the Chamber offices, and we will start the process for you before we make the selections. Next, we have one of my favorite nights, or one of my favorite mornings of the year, and I'm not a morning person. The Mayor's Breakfast is this Thursday morning, November 8th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Lincoln Inn. Many of you from city council and staff are already registered to join us. I invite the public to register. We actually cut off registrations today, but we can probably take a couple last-minute ones tomorrow if anyone sees this broadcast and would like to register to join us. Then on November 14th, we have RBC Squared, which is the Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. It's a networking group that meets at the Comfort Inn in Geneva. Then that evening, we have our Networking It, which is our evening networking event, and it will be hosted at Hula Hands this month. It will be, and they are going to be collecting donations for Fox Valley Wildlife Center, which is located in Elburn. Then we have an 11-chamber, multi-chamber progressive luncheon, if you want to rub elbows with a bunch of other business people from the surrounding area. That is Wednesday, November 28th. It's a luncheon at the Holiday Inn Carol Stream. Then we have our HR programming at Valley Industrial Association. This month, it's on conflict management, and that will be on November 29th at 7:30 a.m. And former Alder person here at the city of Batavia, Paula Mueller, has started her own business in the old Main Street offices. They kicked Main Street out to get a retailer in to bring some sales tax revenue into our downtown. Just kidding. They gladly offered Paula the space, because that's what she wanted, and so they have moved their offices. But we're doing a ribbon-cutting for her couture consignment shop in downtown Batavia, and that will be on December 6th at 4:00 p.m. I also, just Roy reminded me, and I know it's a little bit off, but on Tuesday, December 11th, Batavia Women in Business will be hosting our holiday luncheon at the Lincoln Inn. And as always, half of the proceeds from that event go to the Access Toy Drive, and half go to the Batavia United Way Adoptive Family Program. So if you can, if there's donations or anything that we can collect, we ask all the attendees for that event to bring toys to donate, and gift cards and cash, just as what Roy was asking for. And so that was, we love partnering with them and helping them to raise money. They usually fill in all the people, because they don't just stop when he said December 9th, that's when they're doing the distribution. They always get last-minute people that come in that, of course, they want to make everyone have a happy holiday season this year. So they often use our toys and those things to kind of fill in those requests later in So that is Tuesday, December 11th at the Lincoln Inn. Again, that's our Women in Business Holiday Luncheon. That's all I have for you. Looking forward to seeing you all Thursday at the Mayor's Breakfast. We can hear about all the amazing things that have occurred and are going to be occurring in our community. Always enlightening for learning a little bit more about what's going to be coming up in Batavia. So looking forward to seeing you all there. And I did walk around the table with him when we, before the meeting started this evening. But our Business of the Month this month is Aqua Viva, the new restaurant that's up the street here on Houston. And we have Vito Brandonicio and Bob Tardella here to talk a little bit about their new restaurant here in Batavia.
Welcome.
Evening, Holly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Consular.
I just got a little speech, just, just one second speech. My name is Vito Brandonicio, as you all well aware, from Aqua Viva. The Roots in Batavia started nearly 30 years ago, when I opened my office for my construction business here in the early 90s. We were involved in building many buildings in the Fox Valley area, including the Batavia Post Office. I opened Vito's Pizzeria on Wilson in the mid 90s and sold the business a few years later, so we could focus on our construction business. Now, in 2006, after opening the World Classic Winery in Maple Park, and other Aqua Viva Restaurant in Sycamore, and to come back to Batavia when our building became available just up the street at 35 North Water Street, across from Batavia Depot. There are several reasons why I think our strategy will benefit the city of Batavia. First of all, we have been fortunate enough to produce many award-winning wines at our winery in Maple Park. We have won many international wines and competitions for our red and white wines, and have won Governor's Cup Awards several times, have been the best wines in Illinois. We sell our wines all over the United States and have had increased production to keep up with the demand of our product. We have had to purchase 40 acres of land to increase our grapes production, and we have had double of our wines, equipments, tanks, storage, and wine making. Located next to the winery is Aqua Viva Guest House. The rooms at Aqua Viva Guest House are furnished with old-world, European-style furnishing. The view of the vineyards added to peaceful ambiance where the people can relax and enjoy the present moment. The six rooms, the six rooms are each named after one of Aqua Viva's Wine Award wines: Dona Mia, Don Giuseppe, Biancabella, Piacere, Vettino, and Briana. People come from all over the country to stay at our guest house and experience the wine tasting and tourist of our winery. Many visitors want to experience the fine dining during their stays at the guest house, so we encourage them to go to one of our restaurants, which includes Batavia. Many of the people who may never have come to the area if it weren't for the winery. In addition, to offer all our award-winning wines, Aqua Viva Batavia also has the largest selection of seafood and fish in the Fox Valley area. We also have famous pasta meats, including beef aged at our facility, sausage that we make to our own specification, and world cheese, world cheese, cheese. We create unique dishes and have several wonderful specials in Batavia each night of the week. Our special dishes have already become popular. I would say that most people order special than they order off the regular menu. I expect the best of our chi and staff to become, and I want our Batavia customer to have a great experience. I would like the people to enjoy the foods and the ambiance. I want the hospitality to be at the level of their people feeling like they're part of the family. I have always been encouraged by my mother, who I loved and always would. She always gave her family, the only thing she wanted in return was love, respect, and dignity. Like my mother, I want to give the same thing special to people of Batavia. I want to have a place that Batavia could be proud of. So in closing, I would like to say that Aqua Viva Batavia is not about that, what Batavia can provide for us, it is about what we can provide for the wonderful people of Batavia. May God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Prior to getting you with Aqua Viva, believe it or not, I used to weigh 150 pounds. So please, please come to the restaurant. This way, if you eat a little bit more, I don't have to eat quite as much. So appreciate that. Thank you very much. The Council was good enough to grant us an outdoor beer garden and wine garden starting that will finish the construction next spring. We were contemplating when to do a grand opening. As time came across, we were to make sure we could do it the right way with proper staff, as Vito said, to do it like with our family. So with the winter weather coming, it's going to be difficult to do it the right way. So what we've done is we decided to put it off till the warmer weather in the spring, when we can finish doing the beer garden and the outside gardens, I shouldn't say beer garden, the outside dining area that you folks have kindly granted to us and designed, so we can show off the rest of downtown Batavia, we can show off the area, we can do this in a right way with the right weather that we can come. So we'll be doing a grand opening in the spring, and as soon as the weather dictates, we'll make sure that it's known and put it in the media, et cetera, with that. So at that, we'd just like to thank everybody. You do have in front of you catering menus, regular menus, and truly, we invite the people of Batavia to come in. If there's something our chefs would be happy to do, special occasions, so happy to do that, come in and try our wonderful wines. If there's any questions that members of the Council would have, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Alderman Brown.
No question. I just have to make a comment, Your Honor. And since I've only got a few months left to do this, I don't mind taking up everybody's time. But I haven't met Bob, and Bob, so it's a pleasure to meet you, but I have, I've known Vito for many, many years. In fact, I think I first met Vito back in 1984. And at that time of my life, I was going through a pretty rough patch. I was getting a divorce from my, then at that time, my wife. I had gotten a job, and it was through Vito at his construction company. And Vito kind of took me under his wing at that time and said, you know, "Come on, kid, I'll help you out here a little bit." And by God, he kept me working as much as he could possibly keep me working. And he ended up, you know, my kids ended up calling him Uncle Vito. And I can, I'll never forget, there was the night before Thanksgiving, I think it was 1985, I got a phone call on the night before Thanksgiving, and it was Uncle Vito. And he said, "Dave, what are you doing tomorrow for Thanksgiving?" And I said, "Well, I'm going to my ma's house." And he said, "Okay." He says, "You're going to your ma's?" And I said, "Yeah, well, why do you ask?" And he said, "Thanksgiving is a time to spend with your family." And he said, "I know you're going through a tough time, and I wanted to make sure you were with family. I'd like you to come to my house if you're not going to your ma's house." And I said, "No, thanks for the invite, but I'm going to my ma's." So, you know, thanks very much. So what Vito just said about family and making sure that everybody in Batavia is happy, you can take to the bank. So I just wanted to recognize Vito for being the man he is.
Alderman, thank you very much. And please, you're all welcome to Vito's house. We're not, the house of Batavia, we shouldn't do that, because his wife might kill me, but, you know, please join us for ladies' night. If you have any questions, we also have, you know, Shae Brandonicio and Vicki McMahon as part of our management team, so the ladies would be happy to help you at any time, stop by, helping with planning a special menu, party, or whatever. And really, thanks for the opportunity to be in front of all of this evening. Anyone else, any other questions?
Any other question? I just want to say, as the Mayor, how pleased I am that you are here in Batavia. Laura and I just had the opportunity, we have this thing now going called the Tri-City Mayor's and Managers Lunch. And so we had the mayors of Geneva, St. Charles, and we had two, a former mayor of St. Charles with us over to the restaurant for lunch here a couple of weeks ago. And it was wonderful, and the food was excellent, and, you know, it's good to be able to show off Batavia to our counterparts from Geneva and St. Charles and have a good thing to show off. And that one really made us look really good. And they were remarking with great praise about how good the food was, and how nice the service was, and everything that was being done. So I just want to thank you. I'm hearing, in the community, I'm hearing nothing but nice things being said about your restaurant, the quality of the food, the service, and just the general friendly atmosphere that customers experience when they walk in for a dining experience.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much. You're more than welcome to let us use your facility to show off restaurants in Batavia at any time. And Holly told us Tuesday night is ladies' night, she didn't say I said that. So thank you all again very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Holly, did you want to say something? You got up, I thought maybe you were...
I just didn't want him to forget to tell everybody that Tuesday night's ladies' night, so.
All right. Moving then to item number eight, which is a presentation on the 211 service coming to Kane County. And Laura, you're going to introduce this?
Yes. So it was back in February of this year when the tragic event of the shooting at Stoneman Douglas High School happened. And as you recall, Alderman Callahan, Meitzler, and Chris Lowe came to ask us to bring the community together to talk about what things that we might do in our community to prevent a tragedy like this from occurring. And a lot of times, those conversations, while there's a lot of passion behind trying to find something to do, it can sometimes be hard to find just one thing to rally around. Members of the community came together, including our police department, the school district, members of our not-for-profit communities, and we decided to rally around an idea that was presented by the Batavia United Way, which was to bring 211 services to our communities. And I'm happy to say that through the hard work of the Batavia United Way, and by never accepting no for an answer, and to keep knocking on doors and rallying the support from within the city of Batavia, but also in Kane County, that they have been able to accomplish this goal. So I have here with me today Melinda Kintz, who is the Executive Director of Batavia United Way, and also just recently won the Barth Award, which was presented by Tri-City Family Services, and also Rick Pumo, the President of their board, to share with you the 211 services that we now have in Kane County.
I'll take the promotion.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having us on the agenda tonight. It is fitting that this is where it all started. And I think Laura's rather humble in the role that she played in starting the process by calling, helping to coordinate the meeting, which talked about how can we improve safety in the community. And it was a lot of other Batavians that pitched in in the effort, including, after Melinda made the suggestion that we focus on 211, and throughout the idea, Tony Inglisi brought that idea to every other school district in Kane County in one meeting, and immediately garnered support. It's always important to have that first organization to stand up and say, "We'll support you, and we'll contribute." And then everybody else takes notice and stands up and listens. So from, help from Tony, help from George Sheets at the library to coordinate countywide meetings, support from our fire chief to get the word out on billboards and do whatever he can. This doesn't happen in a vacuum. Melinda, who championed this project, as tenacious as she is, as much time as she's spent on it, is always quick to say, it took an entire community to make it happen.
I can add that I tried to reach out, call, email, knock on every door of the Kane County government, and I did not, I was not able to get in front of anyone until I talked to Lisa Hitchens, and she said, "Well, I know a guy over there." And she made a phone call and got an appointment for us with Chris Lousen, who put us in touch with his people, and that ended up being almost half of our funding, three years of funding. So we have, we have raised through a variety of sources, we've raised funding for a three-year pilot project. And I travel without any notes anymore, because this presentation we have for you is two minutes and 35 seconds long, and it really speaks to what the project is better than, better than we can. So if we can just have you turn around and take a look at this for a minute, it is a great summary of what we have here.
The United Ways of Kane County are so happy to announce the availability of 211, the number to call when you're not sure who to call.
Kane County 211, how can I help you?
211 agents work the most comprehensive database in Kane County to identify the most appropriate resource for you. From healthcare to elder care, to employment resources, to legal assistance, and so much more, there's a trained professional ready to connect you with the most appropriate social service.
I took a call recently about a lady that needed help getting some bills paid, and we gave her a few referrals about that and got her set on the right path, got her a little bit of emotional validation, just not feeling crazy about it. So it was really nice to be able to be that support for her and give her the resources she was really looking for.
We're very excited about the 211 service. It will help all of our students and families with their social and emotional needs. There are times when a family just needs help, when a student just needs somebody to call and find out what agency they can go to to get the help they need. It could be to intervene in a bullying situation, it could be to help them with a gang situation, it could be a domestic violence situation, or it could be a financial situation. 211 is a service that can provide the help immediately to those families and those students. And our schools are very excited to be able to say, we now have 211 in Kane County.
Well, just today, we did a follow-up call. We like to check and see how things are going for everyone. And the person we called back, we needed help with their rent and utilities, and they were able to get help with both of those. And they felt, they felt a lot better about things, a lot less stressed, and, you know, that just made me feel good, knowing that we were able to get them the help that they needed.
The United Way would like to thank Kane County Schools, Kane County Government, and the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley for their contributions. Thanks to your support, Kane County 211 will be able to answer every call from every person every single day.
It's live. November 1st, it went live, so phones are being answered as we speak. We are working very hard to get the word out to everyone. It's only as good as the, you know, the volume of calls that come in. But this is... But this is, whoops. Just kind of watch a good movie. This is, 2-1-1 is in 94% of the country. Illinois and Arkansas are the last states to add 2-1-1 to their docket, mostly because of funding issues. In many states, the government, the state pays for the service. In our case, we had to go out and find the funding, but there are communities around us, there's about 40 counties in Illinois that have this service, and the schools were clamoring for it. They said they needed, they actually put money on the table in the very first meeting and said, "We need this. Our families have problems that are so complex, they're never just one visit to our office, we just need some kind of backup." And actually, just since we went live on the 1st, there, the largest volume of calls has been between 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM, which is kind of interesting. But this should take a little bit of load off of our police and fire departments. A lot of the calls are just simply comfort calls from senior citizens in storms and when there's a crisis in another area, they just want someone to talk to and make sure it's not going to happen to them. So it's comfort calls, it's resources, it's, "How do I get a GED? How do I get Meals on Wheels for my mom? I heard there's a service that comes to their house. How do I get help with prescriptions when I don't have insurance?" So it's all these types of things. It's not just social services, it's human resources, it's a wide gamut of things, and it's also a backup for emergency situations. We're not as sophisticated yet because we're so new, but in North and South Carolina, they fielded, 2-1-1 fielded 5,000 phone calls in the 14 days leading up to the major hurricane that they had there. Just people getting anxious, and what do I do? And the 2-1-1 system can be set up to back up, the police department can tell 2-1-1, "This is what I want people to know if they call you and they're panicked or they need a comfort call." So it's going to back them up as well and let them focus on the more critical situations as they do best. So we're very excited about it. We really need everyone's help in spreading the word. Batavia just does everything in such a supreme fashion. We don't worry about Batavia, our schools are already all over this. But in sharing the word with other cities, other fire departments, it's going to take us a while to be able to cover the whole county, and we just really want to get the word out on it. Questions? There's...
Can we make sure that we get a copy of that video to BATV?
Absolutely.
So we can run it on...
It's already done. Rick's already taken care of that.
I want to make sure that that connection got made.
Andrew, I hopefully started showing it this week. He said he'd fill in the holes in the schedule.
Great.
But also on that note, BFC Printing in Batavia, everything starts in Batavia on this project, but BFC Printing has set up a portal for us. They donated the cost of doing that and have done all the labor for us, but they've set up a portal that individuals can go, or businesses, not-for-profits can go on to and log in, and there's a menu with, you know, pictures of marketing pieces that you can get. The schools already have pre-ordered all their supplies. We have banners, we have posters, we have just eight-and-a-half-by-11 nice glossy flyers. There are English on one side, Spanish on the other side. There's a business card-sized piece and a rack card for libraries. So thanks to the grant from the Community Foundation, they gave us $20,000 for just print materials. So BFC priced it aggressively, they set up the portal for this. So again, we want to go to our not-for-profits and say, you know, "Order some services." It's on the house, thanks to these grants, and please, you know, when your patient at the Tri-City Health Partnership comes in because they're sick, you know, they also may have other issues, so offer them a little 2-1-1 card on the way out, and let's get everybody used to that number.
All right, Meitzler?
First off, just want to commend and thank you. I think this is fantastic and long overdue, obviously with Illinois being so far behind. But I mean, I think one of the really important things to stress here, too, is amongst all those services that, you know, were being listed and, you know, abilities to help people is that this actually puts you in contact with very local services, too. Does it not? That's one of the strengths of this, is that it's not across the country contacting a 1-800 number.
That's right. They're all services available to Kane County residents, and there are over 1,000 different services to choose from. An impossible task to sort through all of those agencies, especially when you're not in a position to manage executive thinking, right? You're in a crisis. So, yeah, they are specific to Kane County residents.
And we've always had the Kane County Guide. Some people are familiar with that. It's an online tool for finding resources, but we find a lot of people don't have computers, they don't have internet, they don't have the patience to go through the whole system, and there's just nothing like a live, warm person on the other end of the line to walk you through it. And we have families that have these complex issues where they call because they've left their home in an abuse situation, but, so they need to deal with the abuse, they need to deal with the legalities of it, but then in the meantime, their kids need clothes and they need food. So where do you begin? So you can call and talk to this person at 2-1-1, address the, and they can calmly, they're well-trained to calm them and get through the first problem, and then say, "Call me back tomorrow," or "Call me back when you're ready to deal with this next one." So I think the personal touch to it is going to make a big difference, too.
Alderman Janzen?
Go ahead. I'm happy that this is here. I told some friends about it, and they said, "Well, we know when to call 911, we know if it's an emergency or dispatch." I couldn't answer the question, "When is it serious enough to call 2-1-1?" Because it doesn't sound like it has to be serious.
It doesn't have to be serious, and as Rick so eloquently said in our video, "It's the number to call when you don't know who to call." There is no, and the nice thing is, it's anonymous, nobody knows it's you. You tell them your zip code, so they're feeding into the right database and not DeKalb or not McHenry. But, you know, you can ask any, no question is too small or too big. And you do, you think twice, "Well, should I call 911 because the fireworks are going off in the neighbor's yard behind me?" Or is it kind of, this is, there's no right or wrong, you can always call, and there's always someone to take the call. There's, we went down and visited the, I should say, we've contracted with PATH, P-A-T-H, which is a crisis center in Bloomington-Normal, and there wasn't a system, a 2-1-1 certified data, or call center here in the county already, so we contracted with them. They're experienced, they're already doing this for 40 other counties, and they are strategically placed between Illinois State and Illinois Wesleyan, so they have a constant flow of new social service and psychology students and graduate students that come in every year that have the energy to stay up till 2:00 in the morning and take these calls. But yes, there's no question too small, so...
Alderman Kelly?
Watching from the eyes of you and in the back of your head. So I've been reading several articles, and posting them, Susan, about naysayers creating negativity. And the flip side of that is positivity breeds more positivity. And while this was first brought to myself and a few others' attention out of the school shooting, it was at a time of, "We need to do something, need to do something," and people wanted to do something, something local, something that was tangible. And you came in and brought this idea, and it was met with. That would be phenomenal. But then you heard a little bit of, "But someday, it might not be here in the near future, and it's going to be such hard work," and so on, so forth. And we're six months later, and it's here and it's live. And that is kudos to you, thank you. That is absolutely amazing. Really appreciate everything that you've done to make sure that it's here and that people will use it, so that it's just another example of what we do locally. We're just like, roll up your sleeves and actually do it, stop talking about things and do. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, the United Way Board is a group, it's a hands-on working board, and so when we came to them with the idea and we told them about the meeting that Laura hosted, and I had already talked to the other United Ways in the county, and they're like, "Ah, it's February, we're already kind of into our year, and we don't have any money," and I said to my board, "Well, you know, this is going to take a lot of time. You want me to keep going? You want to wait until they can jump on?" And they all just said, "Let's just do it." So really, it comes, you know, credit to them and to, as we said before, to Laura for starting the conversation and for taking all of our, you know, you talk about, is that a really good question to call them about? Well, there's like 10 of them to her, a few to the mayor, you know, everyone else, but yeah, it's definitely a community project, for sure, so. And Batavia always just gets it done, so that's good, yeah.
And now, we're really hoping to count on everyone here as well in getting the word out. The success of any 2-1-1 implementation is entirely dependent upon communication and outreach. There are at-risk populations that are simply difficult to get to. We have a large number of them here in Kane County. They value their anonymity, and so it's important for them to be able to trust this resource and have confidence that their situation won't be compromised or shared with anyone else. Those kinds of things don't necessarily come from a commercial that you watch on the internet or on Batavia Access. They may need to come from your church, from your priest, from a friend, and that's where it really helps to have feet on the ground in the community, communicating those things. So if you have an opportunity for us to come in and make a presentation or show this video at a church or at a venue that you think reaches out to a number of high-risk individuals, we would love to join you.
I do want to add one more, one more thing that's not quite as fun, but with a 2-1-1 phone number comes, of course, making that number live, and all the phone carriers come to find out, there's over 100 phone carriers in Kane County. So the number is live. I know AT&amp;T works, I know Verizon works, Comcast works, but we're coming across the little obscure carriers that we're finding out, "Well, my number doesn't work." So in those cases, we need to remind people to just call, there is a toll-free number to the same call center, it's on our posters, it's on our marketing materials. They should still call that number so that they can get the help that they need, but then also say, "Hey, I have MediaCom and it's not working," which actually MediaCom is working, "But, you know, this is, my carrier's not working." They will take care of it immediately and contact the carriers. Six out of the nine school districts all have Windstream, and it's not working. So they're being patient with us, it was their carrier sold their service, so that's, you know, that'll be done probably by the end of the week. But if you do, feel free to test it from your home, from your office, let us know if the number doesn't work, or call the toll-free number and let them know. But eventually, it'll be, it'll be perfect, but for now, we're just trying to catch all those little random pieces.
Well, certainly, on behalf of the community, let me just say thanks to both of you, and Melinda, your efforts here have been extraordinary, so I thank you for...
Sidekick here, yeah. Thank you very much.
Well, you're the one, you're the one that was always on me, so I'm...
Can I tell you how many conversations, every conversation with the mayor, you're getting good now, though. He always says, "Now, Melinda."
But you always have some good cause, it's pretty hard not to jump in behind. But I just want to thank both of you for what you've done here. This really speaks well, again, for what Batavia's all about and what this community really wants to try to do, is be a community that really speaks to the support of its citizens and especially those on troubled issues. This, I think, will be something that will provide untold benefits to a whole bunch of people that will never read about it in the newspaper, but because of your quiet determination and action here, we've got some stuff that will really, hopefully, maybe set some people back in the right course of life and make their lives better and will make our world a better place. So this is, this is one of these things you do that you're never going to know, really, what all it accomplishes, but I think there's the promise here that this is really going to have a positive impact on a whole bunch of folks. So on behalf of the community, I say thank you to both of you for really setting something up here that is truly going to make a difference for the betterment of our town.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to item number nine, which is Ordinance 18-66, approving a conditional use permit for medical offices and clinics for Geneva family practice at 8:15 North Randall Road. Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
Alderman Stark's going to take it, Your Honor.
I do have this. Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 18-66 is a conditional use permit for Geneva family practice, and we're very lucky to have them moving to Batavia. They will be located in the Walmart parking lot area on the north side of Fox Drive between Walmart and PNC Bank, just south of Pep Boys and Pacer Dental. So where the old emergency, Delnor Emergency Clinic was, is their new location. And so the reason this came before us is because it was not zoned for a medical clinic. It went to Plan Commission and then to City Council, and unanimously, City Council, the COW, passed it to us for approval. And so tonight, I don't know, one of the doctors from the clinic is here, so he can come and talk a little bit about what they're doing up at the new clinic.
If you'd come up and use the mic, please, and give us your name, so we can, the clerk can put you on the record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Robert Rivers, and it's an interesting evening here, and I've got to commend all of you for listening. This has got to be my first City Council meeting, and I've been in the Tri-City since 1975, been through many other board meetings and certainly hospital meetings, and I've got to say, the people that have talked tonight have really brought our community into, you know, some great services, and I think I'm kind of the last of a little bit of someone up in here requesting something. I'm kind of small potatoes compared to a winery and the rest of it. The, a little quick background as to how we got here. When I came to the Tri-Cities, I started with a couple of other physicians, and after a while, we kind of separated as I was doing more baby deliveries. I'm a family doctor, by the way. So we take care of everything from the newborn all the way on to our grandmas and grandpas. And at that time, I started doing many more deliveries than the other physicians I was with. And so even when I wasn't on call, I'd find myself going in for deliveries into the old Geneva Community Hospital. And I ended up starting my own practice and was located right at that hospital. And probably in the years after that, I may have delivered 1,000 babies, and there are many of them that are still in our community here. The, as you all know, that hospital bit the dust, and my office building over there is no longer, it's all been leveled. So moved, well, first back up, I had Dr. Fahey join me, and in 1982, I started that practice, and he joined me shortly thereafter. And after community closed, we moved over to the new Delnor Hospital and have been there until this time, in their professional building. And I've had the good fortune of having three other good mid-level practitioners that have worked with us, and together, we've had thousands of patients come through our office. As you may know, the hospital eventually joined with Central Page Hospital, became Cadence Hospital or Cadence Group, and now it's Northwestern. And of course, as each level goes up, I think those of us on the bottom become less important. And one of the things that has happened is that they've looked at our space and decided that they have other uses for our office space, and it's become necessary for us to seek another spot. I've been a Batavia-area resident for 20 years here, and started, of course, looking, and we came across the facility that Delnor had used as an urgent care facility there. It will and would meet our needs very nicely because it's already been built out as exam rooms, has almost all the things that we have in my office now in the professional building. And, you know, I kind of look at it as bringing a little bit of Geneva to Batavia here. The special use permit is what is bringing me here because we do not, obviously, tax our patients, and so we're not a taxing body or a revenue-producing body. patients, and so we're not a taxing body or a revenue-producing body for the city, and yet we're taking up commercial space that theoretically could be. On the good side, as I mentioned earlier, we have thousands of patients, and we bring them, and fortunately, they stop at other stores, they use the local pharmacies, and we even have a little weight loss clinic where we actually sell things, where we have people pay tax on some of the items there. I'm hoping that we could be a real resource to the community here. We, our practice has kind of evolved through the years, and I know that there is a senior complex going in very close to there. Hopefully, we could be helpful from that side. I don't know that I have too much to say, I don't want to be long-winded after a long night here for you. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Doctor? Alderman Chanset?
I would just make a remark, as I did in committee, that I've been a patient of his for more than 30 years, and I'm probably still alive because of the service that he gave. And Susan, what'd you call me, Danny? Because I've been going there since I was like 10 years old.
No, Ross, yeah, Danny.
But I can testify to the level of care, and I'm very happy that he's here. I did toss him a softball in committee, though. I said, "Now would be the perfect time to change your practice name to Crosstown Family Practice." Welcome.
Well, I had one resident I know in Geneva who apparently is a long-term patient of the good doctor, and she told me that this is a bit of a stretch for her to now have to go to Batavia to find the Geneva family clinic. And I said, "Well, they are, they're beginning to realize where the good side is."
We got South Batavia Avenue.
Right, right. So anyway, it's all in fun, so, thank you. Look forward to having you here. Okay, will you, did you make...
No, I have not.
...made a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 1866, conditional use permit for medical offices and clinic Geneva family practice, 8:15 North Randall Road, Geneva family practice applicant.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chanset, for the approval of Ordinance 1866, approving the conditional use permit for medical offices and clinics for Geneva family practice at 8:15 North Randall Road. Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Just because he brought it up about the commercial use for non-commercial use in that strip there. We are still way below the percentages that we set of non-sales tax generating businesses, so, just so everybody can remember that.
Kirk, hold the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Ordinance 1866 is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. So welcome to Batavia. Okay, moving to item 10, which is motion to authorize execution of articles of agreement for deed for land on Danforth Road. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council approved a resolution which authorized the sale of land on Danforth Drive that the city owned. We advertised the land for bid. We received a bid from Peter Girardi and his wife, Ann Pape Girardi, and so we will be selling the land to them over a period of three years. And this motion is to authorize the execution of an article of agreement for deed on that land.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I will. I move to authorize execution of articles of agreement for deed for land on Danforth Drive.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chanset, to authorize execution of articles of agreement for deed for land on Danforth Road. Any discussion? Kirk, Alderman Chanset?
I would just mention, as I did in committee, that I appreciate that we've been flexible with the financing. I think that this will assist in future properties like this.
Alderman Callahan? Just to piggyback on that, the key part of that, though, is a good, if they don't pay all three, they don't get the land, so it would behoove them to pay all the land, which I'm sure they will.
Anybody else? Kirk, hold the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
A-Tech?
No.
Okay, Ordinance 1869 is approved by a vote of 12 yes, 2 no, and none absent. Okay, we're going to move to item 13. Laura Newman's here tonight with some very good news. Laura Newman.
Well, I'll start with that good news, and that is that Alpha Goma has let us know that Batavia is where they are going to locate their next United States manufacturing facility. While at first they're going to be leasing the facility, they hope with, sometime within the first three years, to actually purchase that building. And while they'll initially be coming in with what they estimate when they're up and running to be about 300 kilowatt-hours average monthly electric usage, they feel that within the first few years of their occupancy, that they're going to be able to achieve 500 kilowatt-hours of monthly average electrical service. And while they're initially going to start off with two shifts and over 100 employees, they hope to double that and go to three shifts. And so they have very ambitious goals, and which they feel are absolutely achievable, and so we're very proud that we were able to present them with an incentive to locate this facility here, and I'd like to thank all of you for supporting that as well. So that's tremendous news for us because the facility that was vacated by Rubicon a couple of years ago was something that was very difficult to find an alternate user, and Alpha Goma appears to be that perfect alternate user, and they're so excited to be coming here, and they are full speed ahead. They are going to, they want to be installing equipment in the facility starting in December, and they want manufacturing to begin in April of next year. So, we're really looking forward to working with them, and we have enjoyed working with them thus far. Also wanted to let you know about some other things that are going on. Planning staff is compiling the documents that are necessary for recording the windmill landings project. We're just waiting for some documents that the petitioner has to provide before that can be recorded. Planning and engineering staff are continuing a review of two speculative industrial buildings on Nagel Boulevard, and final engineering comments have been made, and we anticipate that the subdivision plat and design review will be in front of the Plan Commission on a special meeting on November 14th. Staff is continuing to review the revised submittal for the Winding Creek development on the Land Meyer Farm property. We anticipate this will be on Plan Commission agenda sometime in December. Also, staff is working with the school district and adjacent landowners regarding the sidewalk that was between two homes, two Alice Gustafson School and Smith Court, and the landowners in the district are negotiating some of those easement provisions, and once complete, then we will propose a license agreement to use for the city, to use city land for that sidewalk, and after the sidewalk is completed, we will consider a sale of this land to the adjacent property owners. The Park District has submitted permits to demolish two additional properties that they have acquired on the west side of South River Street, and after demolition, they will seek to rezone those properties to Parks and Open Space District. And also, per City Council direction, staff has negotiated and ultimately reached mutual agreeable terms in developing, oh, that, I'm sorry, that was Alpha Goma. I already told you about that. The last thing, and this is very important, we've talked about it every meeting since the petition was filed, tomorrow is our election, and people in the city of Batavia are going to have a very important referendum question put before them, and that is, should the city of Batavia cease to be home rule unit? And the wording of that question is mandated by the statute. I've been approached by a number of people who find that question confusing, but if you go to the city website, right on our homepage, it will show you if you're voting yes, it's to get rid of home rule. If you're voting no, no, is to keep home rule. That's also on our Facebook page, so, you know, maybe if it helps you to kind of look at that as you go to the ballot box tomorrow. Also, in case you want more information about that, the city has created a page with a number of different articles, presentations, and all of the questions and answers that were presented and given as part of the city's public meeting regarding home rule. And certainly, if you would like to call and ask a question, I'm available for that as well. You can reach me at 630-454-2050. I've had a number of nice conversations with residents who had some last-minute questions that they wanted to ask about home rule. But the most important thing is, this is a critical question, so make sure you vote tomorrow, and let your opinion be heard. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
While you're still standing there, I just want to share, as this Alpha Goma thing was going down, I got brought into it kind of after the fact by the staff because the chairman of the board, I guess it was, came to Batavia from Italy, flew over here. I didn't know if we were going to have a language issue or not, but he seemed to understand English pretty good. And he came in and was pretty quick in telling us that he had made the decision that this was the place to go, but, and he was very cordial and very appreciative for whatever the city staff had done. And then I had the opportunity to kind of walk him out of the building and then walk him out to the car that was waiting, so we had a chance to kind of talk one-on-one. And I just wanted to share with the council, and I've already sent you kind of a memo that says this, but this gentleman, who had never really been to Batavia before and didn't know any of us or know much about us until he got here, could not say enough stuff of a positive nature about what an outstanding city staff we have, and how courteous, but more impressive to him was the knowledge base that they had, and the quick understanding that they had of some of the technical questions that they had. And he was extremely commendable to Laura and her demeanor and the way she had handled he and his staff, and had been totally impressed by her performance with him, and as far as his understanding of what Batavia was all about and what we would or would not be able to do as far as any kind of electrical incentive. Man couldn't just say enough good stuff about it. So, as the mayor, I kind of stand there and bask in the pride of this because, you know, this is our staff, and he went on, you know, there was other people, Scott and Union and Gary Holm, and Peggy Colby, I think, too, was another one, and Chris Easton was also one that he mentioned. Those were kind of, I believe, the four that were the, that really had interacted with elves. But he indicated to me that they had looked at other places and had examined other nearby towns. I'm not going to tell, he told me who they were, but that doesn't matter for what I'm saying here now, but that it was clear to him that Batavia overwhelmingly was the place to go, the place to be, and he was very confident that he had made the right decision. And, I mean, he seems to be of the opinion that his company is going to be growing and prospering and adding some new lines, and he had, was going on, and I didn't quite understand everything he was saying about, they had, one of the reasons they were here was they had bought quite a bit of material and machinery from the Caterpillar Corporation with the closing of some of their facilities in Illinois and the one down in Oswego, and that's one of the reasons they had come in here. And then while they got here, they started looking around, and they found certain towns that they really liked. They liked the demeanor, the appearance, and the attitude that they found in these towns, and then he said, "And Batavia rose to the top of the pack as far as its attitude and its demeanor on how to treat business." So I felt very good about it, and I was very pleased with how our staff had handled that. So I just wanted to publicly state that tonight, that I think we really owe the staff a sincere thanks for a job very well done, because reeling this one in, I think, could be a very big deal for us as far as electrical use and jobs and a clean industry that we don't have to worry about it spewing some kind of a fume or anything on any of the neighbors and making a lot of noise or doing anything. So this is a good night, and this is good news, so. Thank you, Laura and your staff.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll pass those comments on to the rest of staff who aren't here tonight because they really did the heavy lifting, although, you know, I was a spokesperson. They were the ones who really had the knowledge to provide and impress them, to feel confident that we were going to be able to handle their electric needs and bring them online quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, committee reports. Alderman Brown?
I've got a couple meetings to announce, Your Honor. The Plan Commission for tomorrow evening has been canceled. We do have a special committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 8th, and that begins at 7:00 PM, and the only thing we've got on the agenda for that evening is the budget. That'll be the first of what is scheduled to be two budget meetings. So that begins at 7:00 PM. The next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for November 13th, and that begins at 7:00 PM also. We've got a couple community development items on there. One is Ordinance 18-70 for amending the official zoning map for a few different addresses. They're pocket pieces that Scott is always working on trying to get cleaned up. And then Ordinance 18-71, amending the zoning coltext for the uses in the CC district. And then the last one for community development is Ordinance 1873, terminating special service area number 57, which is for the Batavia Main Street. But he indicated to me that they had looked at other places and had examined other nearby towns. I'm not going to tell, he told me who they were, but that doesn't matter for what I'm saying here now. But that it was clear to him that Batavia overwhelmingly was the place to go, the place to be, and he was very confident that he had made the right decision. And, I mean, he seems to be of the opinion that his company is going to be growing and prospering and adding some new lines and he had, was going on. And I didn't quite understand everything he was saying about, they had, one of the reasons they were here was they had bought quite a bit of material and machinery from the Caterpillar Corporation with the closing of some of their facilities in Illinois and the one down in Oswego. And that's one of the reasons they had come in here. And then while they got here, they started looking around and they found certain towns that they really liked. They liked the demeanor, the appearance, and the attitude that they found in these towns. And then he said, and Batavia rose to the top of the pack as far as its attitude and its demeanor on how to treat business. So I felt very good about it and I was very pleased with how our staff had handled that. So I just wanted to publicly state that tonight, that I think we really owe the staff a sincere thanks for a job very well done because reeling this one in, I think, could be a very big deal for us as far as electrical use and jobs and a clean industry that we don't have to worry about it spewing some kind of a fume or anything on any of the neighbors and making a lot of noise or doing anything. So this is a good night and this is good news. So, thank you, Laura and your staff.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll pass those comments on to the rest of staff who aren't here tonight because they really did the heavy lifting, although, you know, I was a spokesperson. They were the ones who really had the knowledge to provide and impress them, to feel confident that we were going to be able to handle their electric needs and bring them online quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, committee reports. Alderman Brown?
I've got a couple meetings to announce, Your Honor. The plan commission for tomorrow evening has been canceled. We do have a special committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 8th, and that begins at 7:00 PM. And the only thing we've got on the agenda for that evening is the budget. That'll be the first of what is scheduled to be two budget meetings. So that begins at 7:00 PM. The next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for November 13th, and that begins at 7:00 PM also. We've got a couple community development items on there. One is ordinance 18-70 for amending the official zoning map for a few different addresses. They're pocket pieces that Scott is always working on trying to get cleaned up. And then ordinance 18-71 amending the zoning code text for the uses in the CC district. And then the last one for community development is ordinance 18-73 terminating special service area number 57, which is for the Batavia Main Street. And that's all I have for meeting announcements. I did want to ask Laura if she could jump in maybe so we could all do our future planning. I know it's just the beginning of November, but I think you've been talking with staff about the future meeting dates in December as we get towards the holidays? Have you made decisions on what meetings we're going to have in December?
Not specifically, but we can put that on the agenda for one of the upcoming meetings in November to determine that. Maybe I can do a poll of city council to see what dates you might not be available in December and maybe it makes sense to eliminate some of those.
I think that'd be a good idea so that staff can make plans, so we can work with businesses and such so that they know what we're, what we're able to do. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Government services, Alderman Atech?
Other than the budget, we don't have anything on the agenda this month, but I think we'll be busy enough with the budget.
Okay. City services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a couple of resolutions to go over next, a week from Tuesday on November 13th with regard to Main Street reconstruction project and then also new vehicle for community development department. And then also a reminder to everybody that with leaf pickup, the final brush pickup for the year, make sure with the leaves that they stay on above the curve and not out into the street. It's become very interesting to see people dodge those driving up and down different streets. And it also is going to become a real problem with the drains in town if we don't watch and make sure that those leaves stay up there till they get picked up.
Okay. Public utilities, Alderman Ryan?
On November 13th, Your Honor, we're going to just have a small discussion, I guess, appointing Rahad Bari as alternate board member to NMPA. And that is all.
Okay. All right. Other business, anybody in the council have anything? Oh, the hands are going up. Alderman Stark?
As Mark Foster announced in the Chronicle, I will not be running for another term. Eight years on city council has been wonderful and it's time for someone else to take over my seat in the fourth ward. So I'm encouraging people, I haven't seen a lot of audience participation. Normally we'll see a random person pop up in the audience who wants to come and learn a little bit more about city council, maybe you're watching at home. But I encourage you to run. I encourage you to contact me if you have any questions about what it's like to be on the council. We need more outspoken representatives on the city council. And, you know, with me gone, it will be quite a loss in terms of outspokenness.
Wow. We can drop that insurance or run him out.
So, but again, I encourage people to contact me and, you know, I'd be happy to walk you through, you know, everything from the nominating process and filing to elections and what it's like to actually serve on the council, so.
Who's the next one? Alderman Metzger?
All right, very good. So as we all know, the East Side Community Center parking lot is underneath construction. And right next to that, of course, or I should say in that building, is the New Horizons preschool. And so I had some correspondence with a resident, not in my ward, but nonetheless, that there's been a lot of difficulties with drop off and pickup in that area with that parking lot on the northeast section of that block being closed, with a lot of the access being closed off, that the drop off and pick off has become quite dangerous for people that need to park across the street, whether it's Wilson or over on the other side of 25 where the other parking lot is. It sounds like a lot of the street parking, again, I'm not terribly familiar with what is street parking allowed over there, but it's, it's been partially addressed. And for that, she definitely wanted to thank the police department for getting the please stop and notice pedestrians are crossing. But what has become very apparent is that, as that sign has already been hit twice in less than a week, that people are not paying attention when they drive east or westbound on the east side of Wilson. And so considering the fact that we in particular are talking about preschoolers having to cross these streets here, parents with preschoolers, multiple children in some cases, I wanted to propose this during the others, other section here, just so that we could maybe brainstorm out some ideas about how we can make that area a little bit safer for dropping off and picking up, at least in the interim until that parking lot on the northeast corner of that block is once again available. Whether that's relieving some of the no parking that's allowed on some of those side streets, whether that's looking at getting perhaps a temporary crossing guard for either whether it's, you know, going north and south on East Wilson or on State Street. Again, I don't know the staffing power of some of the other departments, but in some way, shape, or form, I think if we don't, we're just waiting until there is an accident there.
I think I heard from the same citizen you're talking.
I'm sure you did.
I think he brings up some good points. I don't know what the answer is. I think maybe we should have the staff take a look at it and see what would be doable there as far as stuff that's going on. That is a challenge, though. I mean, it very much is. And I certainly want to do what we need to do to make it as safe as possible. Hopefully that improvement's going to come along pretty quick and we'll get that parking lot back into place, although I'm told it depends on the weather, how quickly they can get some of that done up there. Okay, who's the next, Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, mine's also police related and fire related. There was a resident who was complaining about a couple of intersections, people running stop signs, and it's some stop signs that always get attention anyways. But the resident was very appreciative within 24 hours. They had patrols out there and she even saw a supervisor had pulled someone over. So she was very commendable for the quick response and appreciative of taking it very seriously. And the second one was just to both of you, for the departments on Halloween, that was a hit of the firemen and the women and the police officers going out through the neighborhoods. It was fantastic. It was great to see, got a lot of feedback from that, that that was phenomenal. So appreciate that.
Mayor, if I could just speak real quickly about the East Side Community Center. We are aware of the situation. I think we've actually corresponded with the same resident. Several weeks, we've been trying to make improvements throughout that area to, we have increased some no parking, temporary no parking signage because what was going on there was, especially along State Street between Van Buren and Prairie, we had vehicles parking on both sides of the street and children darting across the street. And there was only one lane open at the time, so it wasn't passable for two lanes of traffic. The pedestrian sign, I don't believe, has been struck twice. I picked it up twice myself today, myself and W Chief Maza. I think the hinge is broken on it, so we're going to, I was going to talk to Gary, I thought he was going to be here tonight. I'll speak with him tomorrow, see if we can get that replaced. And I think it maybe have, has been struck at one point, but I think the hinge, it's supposed to pop back up if it's struck, and it's not doing that. So I think it's being blown over because one side of the hinge is broken. We are, we are also supplying manpower there as we can in that area, but we're really more concentrating in the area of Van Buren and State, I'm sorry, Station, Van Buren. That's all I have.
Also relating to that, they do have the curbs in and I believe they had proof roll or about to have a proof roll of the gravel surface. So probably within the next two weeks, it should be completed and done. So the asphalt plants are closing soon, so it shouldn't be too much longer with the grief of that that's going on there, but they are making good progress in getting it completed.
Anybody on this side?
Just a reminder that Bulldogs made it through first week of the playoffs. They are on to the second week. They take on Willowbrook at 1:00 this Saturday at home. Got another home game, probably be the last home game. We'll be on the road from there on out. The, also wanted to shout out to the cross-country teams that both went downstate last week. We had a freshman that placed.
Fourth.
It was fourth. And she ran, I think it was the third fastest time at that.
She took second in the state and she ran the fourth fastest of the course record.
And I'll get it right. Thank you. Yeah, she just, this entire season, she has just torn up every track she's been at. And it's going to be amazing to see her go for another three years at high school running, so. And there's also a show at the BFAC on Friday night if you're looking for something else to do. So lots of things other than just on the football field, but really good things happen on the football field.
And for the benefit, I was out there on Saturday doing some stuff at the game. And I had several residents tell me about how they really overwhelmingly enjoying you and your compadre narrating these games. Very, I mean, extremely complimentary. And they were somewhat befuddled because there was a couple games when you weren't on the air, but now you are back. Can you explain that so everybody kind of understands what?
When it gets to the playoffs or in the regular season, if a team or a high school is affiliated with the NFHS, they have rights to the games. And the IHSA, when it gets into the playoffs, basically sells the rights to the games. For BATV to broadcast a game, first of all, it can't be a game that an NFH school wants to do. Now, what happened the first week of the playoffs was, since Batavia is not an NFH school, because we're not in that group, and the revenue doesn't flow through that paid productions because it's free through BATV, the school doesn't get anything from that. So there's not an agreement set up yet. We're working on trying to figure out how we could do that and just probably do it for the playoffs. The reason why we think we have to do that is because Wheaton North is a school already that has it. So even though we would be the home school and Wheaton North comes to play here next year during the regular season, if they wanted to broadcast it, they get rights to it, not BATV or not Batavia. And that's what happened with the first playoff game is West Aurora didn't have a playoff game to do on Friday night. They had their game on Saturday, so they, their crew was available to do our game on Friday night, so they got to do our game because the NFHS takes precedence with IHSA. It really truly is about the money. IHSA charged us, I think it was $450 to be able to broadcast and stream the game last Saturday. And if we get the game again this Saturday and BATV gets to do it, I believe it's almost $700 for the quarterfinal game.
Well, you certainly have a fan club out there.
Yeah, it's very interesting to see when people can't see it. And it was really interesting to see because we went on and sent the information out through social media to all the people in Moline. I mean, they had a radio station that was here that was broadcasting the radio broadcast of it. But there were people that were just super enamored to be able to see their team from Moline on either a smart TV or on the computer and be able to watch that, you know, and not have to, not have to make that trip.
Alderman, who, Brown?
I'm just pointing to the mic to try to remind you to use the mic.
I'm narrating here, I'm not speaking. Anybody else want to speak on something, other business?
No, Your Honor, may I, may I say something? It's been kind of a light meeting, but I gotta say, I'm distressed at, at the level of violence that has happened across our country in the last two weeks. And I know Alderman Chanzid has been bringing this forward, saying that, you know, thoughts and prayers are not enough. And so I don't know, I guess I would ask maybe another Alderman to stand with me and request that you represent the city, that we get a letter off to the mayor of Pittsburgh, that we stand with that, that community there. I mean, that community has really exhibited an incredible amount of grace. All that community, all those religious orders, you know, the Muslim community, the Catholic, the Protestant have come and embraced the Jewish community after this horrific act. And I don't know what solutions there are to this. I really don't. Maybe we should have, in our community, just a community discussion, an ongoing discussion. But, you know, prior to that, they had the, I think it was in Charlottesville, they had, you know, a man go into a Kroger and killed two people because of the color of their skin. I mean, this is some, some really wild stuff happening. It's, and it just, it has to come to an end sometime. And I don't know how to do it, but I would ask someone to stand with me to at least request you to get a letter off to the mayor of Pittsburgh anyway, to let him know that the city of Batavia is a city with, with grace and with, with feelings for fellow men.
I'll stand with you.
I'll be honored to do it. We'll put something together and give you all a copy of it so you can see what we do.
Thank you.
I just want to make a couple of comments here. Number one, this coming Sunday, November 11th, is going to be the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. And we had quite a number of Batavia residents who were part of that fight at the time. And unfortunately, it appears that this year there's going to be a reduction in Veterans' Day ceremonies in town. I guess part of the problem is it's on Sunday and it's in competition with the churches. But the VFW has indicated that they're not going to have much of a, I shouldn't say much, they're not going to have as much of a program as they have in the past. And the community band will not be performing and I'm not sure what all is going to be down there. They are going to do a brief program, it was described to me today, at 11, around a little before 11 on Sunday, but they really haven't advertised it very much. But the one thing that we have always done in Batavia on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of when the signing of the peace of World War I, is that we have always blown the fire whistle or the air raid siren on, at that moment. And so I'm, it's my intention, now this is going to be Sunday morning, and I just want to put the word out. I've, I talked to the Ministerial Association chairman today and he said, certainly go ahead and do it. But we're going to be blowing that whistle probably at right at 11 o'clock during some church services, but I just wanted to hopefully get the word out that we are going to do it. And, you know, I think it's only appropriate that on the 100th anniversary of World War I, that we honor those who so ably served our country at that moment in history because, you know, that was some pretty bare bones service over there at that point. You didn't have many motorized vehicles even and you were, most of your fighting was done on, with your feet. You were walking around and, you know, it was, it was a troubled time, so I just want, don't want that to be forgotten. So we are going to do that. The other thing that I want to just take a moment and shout out to is a word of appreciation to the Batavia Police and the Batavia Fire Department. This past weekend, they, they performed remarkably, both agencies in my opinion. We asked, or I asked for a lot of help from them, specifically as Alan has just, Alderman Wolf has indicated, we had the Batavia High School Girls Cross Country Team go to the state championship down in Peoria starting on Friday. And they called me and said, you know, in the past, the city has sent the fire truck to escort us out of town, could we do it again? So I went out and the police car came with me and the fire truck came over and at 10 o'clock on Friday morning, the 12 girls, I think it was, that were on, you know, on the team, came out with the coach. And I talked to them for a moment and they got on the bus and away they went. And they were really pleased to have that fire truck and the police car there with the lights flashing. And we took them down Main Street to Rando and took them down Rando to Orchard. And then we had to stop because at that point, we were going to be out of our city limits. The firemen waved at them and the police waved and on they went. And so on Friday night, excuse me, Saturday night, they came back and I had talked to the coach and had arranged for him to call me when he was coming back to Batavia. And he said he would. And so he did. And so it came at a time for the fire department where they had two general alarm calls within 20 minutes or a half hour of this bus that was coming at us from Peoria. And the first one ironically was a fire in the basement up at the Riverside Pizza Restaurant in St. Charles, right across the street from the Arcata Theater, which is the same restaurant that's now remodeling the, the old Walgreens to come into Batavia. Fortunately, they got the, they were literally right next door to the St. Charles Fire Station and they were there in a couple of minutes and got, I think it was a motor on fire in the basement and they got the fire out. So they got that one taken care of. Then as we got closer, and I'm calling the duty chief on the fire department and saying, well, they're telling me they're 15 minutes away and no sooner I do this, then they get another general alarm fire out in Elburn at Kenmar and Route 47 for a report of a barn fire. So the guys did a wondrous job of trying to make sure we responded to that fire, but we also kept the truck here, or kept the truck here to take, go get the girls. And fortunately, right away, an Elburn chief must live real nearby where this was because within a few seconds, he was on the air saying he was on the scene and the farmer was just burning some residue behind the barn and it made a silhouette with the flames from behind and somebody going down 47 had called it in. There was no. behind, and somebody going down 47 had called it in, there was no barn on fire. So that got canceled. But then at the end, we had, again, the police and fire brought the team up Randall Road about 8:30 and took them to Pal Joey's, and everybody had a grand old time, and the girls were just, couldn't have been more complimentary toward what we had done for them. During the day on Saturday, I got the bright idea in my head that if we were going to beat Moline, I thought we should do something to mark the moment. And so with the fire station right across the street, I talked to the chief and he agreed to have him do this. We pulled, we have two pumppers and an ambulance out there, so about two minutes left in the game, we pulled the two trucks and the ambulance out on the ramp, and they, they sat there very quietly until Alan Wolf said the game was over, and the boys hit the sirens and the air horns, and we really made a noise out there for about a minute.
It was almost like being at the United Center. Only they could have been a little closer.
I heard very nice comments from a bunch of the fans about what a nice tribute that was for the city to step up and do that.
As we were going through highlights, we could hear all of it.
Yeah, I'm sure you could. But anyway, everybody was extremely pleased, and again, the fire department at that moment was dealing with a very unfortunate situation because they had one of our paid on call men have his daughter killed in an auto accident over in DuPage County, and they were having the funeral at yours, or excuse me, Moss Funeral Home at 4:00 on Saturday. So I had been into the wake and the firemen had been in, so we were, they were chasing a lot, they were doing a lot of stuff there Saturday on a variety of fronts, and, you know, the police were there to help them through everything. And I'm just very proud and pleased that, you know, you demonstrate to people how good public safety can be, but I think in Batavia, we really shined this weekend. And then on Sunday, we had the annual moving all the toys from Santa Claus Tells Me, I'm not supposed to say. We were over on the east side on North River Street, and we had, we had this building full of these toys. Now, what had happened is all the grocery stores just gave us a whole bunch of toys that they had bought and looked at for, I don't know, selling in their stores or whatever have you, but we had stacks and boxes of toys in there. So these are heavy toys, so three guys from the Rotary Club and myself are there, and all of a sudden, here comes all these firemen, some of them off duty, and they come in and they just took care of everything. We had rented a truck and they loaded that truck up to the top, and they had that first row out of there, it was like a divine intervention. It was raining on Sunday morning, and the fire truck pulled up and the rain stopped, and we got the truck loaded, and we moved the first truck over to the Old Cancer Society Building. And again, the boys all got out and got all this stuff in the building, they got back in the truck, went back to get the second load, and it was only till when they got back to the Cancer Society with the second load, that finally it started to sprinkle a little bit, but they were backed up to the door, so none of the toys got wet. And, you know, I just think, you know, nobody, you know, forced anybody to do that, these firemen really wanted to do it because it's kind of a tradition in the Batavia Fire Department that they help with that toy drive. So the police department and the toy drive has its own little thing going, and where they really come into action is on the day of the actual distribution, the chief has three or four of them standing there in uniform. And they meet and greet everybody that's out there in line, because if you're going to come in and get toys, you've got to have this letter in your hand. And they've had a few people show up over the years that didn't have the letter and got a little bit obstinate, and so then they quietly take care of these folks. But in the meantime, they sit there and meet and greet everybody and have pictures taken with people, and it's, it's, it's the life of a small town as good as it can get. And I'm just very, very proud of our community that we rise to these occasions and still do stuff like this. I've had some of the mayors to the east of us, and I was sharing some of this with a couple of them the other day, and they said, can't believe you, it sounds like Mayberry out there on the Andy Griffith Show. And I says, well, you know, we're much more sophisticated than Mayberry, but we do, I think, speak to what the heart and soul of everybody's all about, and, you know, we're trying to do the best thing we can, and that's what we do, and we do it well. And it speaks well to how Batavia is regarded and looked upon by so many. So on Sunday afternoon, I was over there for a while, and I'm standing outside and it's starting to rain, so I went across the street to McDonald's, and I get into McDonald's, and these folks come in and they say, well, our son and daughter moved to this town here the other, last year because they liked the school system. But we've been here now this weekend looking at stuff, and we're so excited about what we see here that we just put a contract down on a house and we're going to move here too because we like the sentiment of this place. And I thought that summed it up quite well, the sentiment of this place, I think, is a very high compliment that these older people said that they're moving over here. I believe they, they're coming from, what was the name of the town? It was Northwest Ohio. I can't think of it right off the top of my, I've got a block here for the moment.
Toledo.
No, it's right near Toledo though. Anyway, they're coming. So they're, so they're, I think that speaks well to what Batavia's all about. And so I just wanted to kind of close by that, and tomorrow I encourage everybody to go vote if you haven't already. And I'm optimistic it'll be a good day tomorrow. I will tell you that as part of just my own personal curiosity, I spent the weekend and I traveled on every street in every ward in this town, and I observed things. And what I observed strengthens my, strengthens my belief that it will be a good day tomorrow. Alderman Chanzet?
After my appointment, when I decided I'd like to seek a term, I went out and got a book on how to run for public office, and the formula that I read and my experience in journalism says that there's one sign equals five votes. I think you're right. I hope so.
Your Honor?
Alderman Brown?
One last comment. You missed one general alarm on Saturday, I believe it was, chief, over on Avro Drive?
Yes.
Yep. And I mean, I'm telling you, I don't know what the response time was, but I can see how we achieved the ISO number one, because it couldn't have been but two minutes, three minutes after the first call, and Geneva was there and North Aurora was there, and, I mean, they were all flying by my house going over to that, to that fire, so.
Yeah, I was out of town when that went out. I wasn't back yet. I was coming back, but I was gone at then.
So it was a busy weekend, you're right.
Yep, you know, and on yesterday, or on Friday, Sunday, when they were, boys were moving the toys, they had five calls, I believe, during that toy moving. Most of them were ambulance, but, you know, they just kept, the ones that weren't going on the calls just kept focused on moving all the toys, and we got all the toys moved.
Yeah, during that general alarm, there was a lift assist over on the east side of town, and then immediately after the chief or the deputy chief called in and said that there was no real concern here, there was an accident up on Randall Road where there was a rollover up there, I believe, and it was interesting.
Yeah, I would, I would strongly debate anybody that wants to make this statement that they're, you know, we're spending too much money on public safety or they're not getting their money's worth here. Because we got, it's, it's already just been published, we got it about as good as it can get, and I'm hoping that we do everything we can to keep that sentiment and that practice alive in this town, because that's what I think is the difference between us and a lot of other places, to deal with a lot, lot of other things that we don't have a lot of. And I'm saying that pretty vaguely, but I think you get my gist of what I'm talking about. Alderman Brown, a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Kirk, take a voice vote.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.